Down there. Hey. Thank you all. Call to order the regular meeting of the Gilbert Town Council, September 1st, 2020. Nobody ever thought we'd make it to September. Except Scott. Tonight, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Yentes, I believe.
If you can join me for the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our invocation tonight will be met by Pastor Trey Richardson from Center Church. Pastor Trey, are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me all right?
We can. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for inviting me. Let's pray. Father, we begin in prayer and we ask your blessing, Lord, on those that are in authority over us here in the town of Gilbert. Lord, we're grateful for them. Thank you for everyone on the Town Council. And Lord, as they meet, as they make decisions, Father, we pray that you would give them wisdom. Father, as James 3:17 says, wisdom from above that's first of all pure, compassionate, gentle, open to reason, full of good fruits, impartial and sincere. Father, we thank you for them. And Lord, we pray for our town, our state, our nation. Lord, we pray that you would stop this coronavirus advance. Lord, that you would bless wisdom at every level of government, our leaders, in addressing this. Lord, we also pray for the unrest, Lord, that is all around us. And we just pray for peace to once again be the hallmark that characterizes our nation. And Father, we pray that the greatest peace, the peace that comes from the gospel of Jesus Christ, would touch lives. The gospel is in John 3:16, "For God so loved the world that he gave his only son, that whosoever believes in him shall not perish but have life everlasting." Father, we ask these things in your name. Lord, and we pray again for all the procedure in the meeting tonight. Lord, we ask your blessing on it. Father, it's in your name we give thanks and pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Roll call.
Mayor Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Jan Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Scott September.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Spence.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Kathy Tilke.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Yentes.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. We have one proclamation tonight, one resolution that we'd like to, that I'd like to read. Mayor Daniels was not able to be here with us tonight, but I thought, and I know that we will be planning some future festivities to honor her, but we do have a resolution honoring her service. Whereas Jen Daniels has served as mayor since July 19th, 2016, and whereas Jen Daniels has served as a council member since June 16th, 2009, including serving as vice mayor during her tenure, and whereas Jen Daniels has served with honor and distinction throughout her tenure, and whereas her influence has always been exercised with utmost concern that the cares and concerns of stakeholders were carefully considered before a decision was reached, and whereas she led Gilbert as the town received a triple-A bond rating from all the three, all three major credit agencies, a rare honor with less than 50 cities in the nation achieving a credit rating this high, and whereas Jen Daniels encouraged the completion of the long-range infrastructure plan for the long-term sustainable maintenance and replacement of all town-owned assets, and whereas she has carried out the duties of public office honoring the public trust and representing the citizens of Gilbert with integrity and courageous leadership. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council on behalf of the citizens of the town of Gilbert hereby express sincere appreciation to Jen Daniels for her service to the town as mayor and a member of the council, passed and adopted this first day of September, 2020. As I said, I know we'll have an opportunity to do some other celebrations for Mayor Daniels at some point in time, but I really do appreciate her service and I'd like to chastise her for leaving me here like this.
Mayor Anderson, since it is a resolution, could we have a council vote on that?
Yes. And I've been reminded tonight that our voting board doesn't work, so all of our votes will be audible. Do I have a motion to pass this resolution?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Communications from citizens tonight. I think we have one that's online, and I have one here also present. Dorleese, invite you to come up. Say your name, your town of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Dorleese Machado-Liddell. I'm a Gilbert resident and Heritage District resident property owner. I'm here in regards to my property rights. Once again, the rights are under attack via the Heritage District Design Guidelines. In 2018, the redevelopment plan cost to taxpayers over $350,000, and the draft design guidelines to date have cost to taxpayers over $57,000. The redevelopment plan is required by state law. However, the design guidelines are not. The town has been working on the draft design guidelines for approximately, or over 18 months, and did not conduct any meetings with the residential property owners of Lacy Track prior to the draft going public. On December 19th, the economic manager reached out to a developer in the 9.1 and asked them to directly communicate with the taxpayers consultant for the draft design guidelines. In January of 2020, the economic program manager reached out to Circle West regarding the proposed development and the design guidelines and directing them to directly contact the town contracted consultant for the design guidelines. However, the town economic department or planning department did not reach out to any property owners in the Lacy Track. During the stakeholders' meeting on January 30th, 2020, I was told that the design guidelines did not change for Lacy Track. They did not change. According to the Gilbert Redevelopment Commission meeting, minutes of February 18th, 2010, the use of the words "shall" and "must" have been purposely avoided within the guidelines, pointed out these are not regulations, just an encouragement. Now, in 2020, according to the principal planner, the Heritage District Design Guidelines will be adopted by ordinance and will have to be followed. In other words, a regulation. This is a dramatic change and will affect my property, private property rights. These regulations are not for all town property owners and are targeting the residential property owners of Lacy Track. I would also like to add that during the August 16th, 2018 Town Council meeting, Amanda Elliott noted, "The plan would not obligate the council to proceed with the recommended projects or require modifications to the design guidelines, land development code or general plan." My question, why would the town direct the staff to recommend that guidelines be enforced by law? Why would the town recommend that my property rights be taken just because of where I live in Gilbert? In closing, I respectfully request that the Town Council, Town staff, to review the 2006 Proposition 207, the Private Property Rights Protection Act, and how the design guidelines will impact such rights. I thank you for your time and I thank you for your service.
Thank you, Dorleese. We have one other person wishes to speak. I think on WebEx, Aziana Clark.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Aziana Clark. I'm a resident of Gilbert and a recent graduate of Highland High School. As we know, Gilbert is among one of the most desirable places to live in the nation, labeled as Kindness USA and marketed as a place where everyone can live, work and play. I understand that local government officials must remain nonpartisan, but I believe that being anti-racist is not a political debate but an ethical obligation. I'm addressing particularly the event at the corner of Gilbert and Warner Roads every Thursday between the Back the Blue supporters and what is known as BLM, the Black Lives Matter movement. Whether or not the altercation was initiated by a Gilbert resident or an outside agitator, white nationalists and their affiliates felt comfortable enough to incite violence in Gilbert. Does it concern you that attendees felt empowered to say white power, do a Nazi salute and encourage violence towards their adversaries on Facebook? Does it concern you that there's a thriving subculture of anti-blackness and xenophobia in Gilbert? Most importantly, are these values that reflect Kindness USA as Gilbert markets itself? Furthermore, the suggestion to look for more constructive ways to engage in dialogue is a slap in the face. Standing on that corner with a sign was not my first, second or third choice. I have been on the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee, my school's diversity coalition, met with the Gilbert Public School Superintendent, and even attended the Gilbert Listening Space. Standing on that corner with the sign was my very, very, very last choice. I'm tired of being palatable to my white neighbors. I am tired and exhausted of compensating on their behalf because I understand they do not know any better. Myself and my black, indigenous and peers of color are hurting, not only because we constantly see the lynching of black people in the media, but because our own neighbors disregard our experiences. So please, tell me, councilmembers and mayor, what am I to do?
Thank you, Aziana. Just so you know, we aren't able to directly respond during the presentation, the citizens' communication, but we do appreciate your comments. Thank you. I need to back up. There are two items that I skipped over, item 1A and 1B, which are part of presentations and proclamations. 1A is council administration, consider nomination and selection of vice mayor. I'd like to know if the council would like to recess to executive session for a few minutes to discuss this before we make that appointment. You good with that? Okay, we'll recess for however amount of time it takes. We'll be back to the regular session in a few minutes. Thank you. Okay. Call us back to order and reconvene the regular session. We'll go ahead and do item 1A, consider nomination and selection of a vice mayor. Counsel?
Mayor, I move to nominate Jan Kaprowski to fulfill the remainder of this term until January.
Second.
The new, moved and seconded, please, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Vice Mayor. All right.
We'll move to item 1B, recognition of Scott Anderson for his service as vice mayor for the town of Gilbert.
Go down there.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson, for your service to the town as vice mayor. We appreciate your service and all that you do for the town. We're happy to have you as mayor.
Thank you.
I think we can move to the consent calendar. Vice Mayor Kaprowski, you want to do that? Vice Mayor Kaprowski, you want to do that?
Any items that need to be pulled from the consent calendar?
Could I just ask a question on number eight?
We'll pull out item eight for discussion and vote separately. To add the motion for the planning commission as well?
We're going to pull the planning commission item?
We're going to add that to the consent calendar.
Okay, great. Let me know when you're ready for that.
We'll do that now.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I move to appoint, I have a motion to appoint to the planning commission, Brian Anderson, Carl Bloemfeld, and David Blazer to full four-year terms beginning September 30, 2020 and ending September 29, 2024. Tyler Jones to a partial term beginning September 30, 2020 and ending September 29, 2023. William Fay to a partial term beginning September 30, 2020 and ending September 29, 2022. And Colby Ashton and Anthony Bianchi as alternates with terms beginning September 30, 2020 and ending September 29, 2021.
Okay. We'll take a motion for the consent calendar. Items two, three, four, five, six, nine, and 12.
Mayor Anderson, Vice Mayor. There are also two other items on consent, 2A and 2B, that were an addendum.
And items 2A and 2B.
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes 7-0. We'll move to item number eight. Councilmember Tilke.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that we moved our council meetings to Tuesday. And when I was looking at the dates, there are three of them that are the day after the holiday. And I don't know if that was a problem with anybody or with staff having a council meeting the day after a holiday.
Yes, that same question when they came out with the calendar. And they didn't seem to think that that was a major issue doing that. I think, Chevalli, I had mentioned something to you about that, and you responded.
Yes, Mayor Anderson. The biggest concern, if it is a concern, is just if there's a need for an addendum. Staff's not able to run an addendum right after a holiday. But we have had several meetings on a Tuesday after a holiday.
I'm fine making a motion to approve. I just wanted to make sure that we understood those dates were there.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Make a motion on item eight?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
Okay. I'll go to the public hearings.
We'll move to-
I'll do that. Thanks. We'll go to the public hearings now. Do any of the council members want to pull any of the items that are listed as public hearings? Any comments on those? Hearing, none. Open the public hearing on item number seven and close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Yes, aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item 10, I'll open the public hearing, close the public hearing, and retain a motion.
Been moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item number 11, I'll open the public hearing and close the public hearing. And retain a motion.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
That item's been removed from the agenda.
Oh, thank you. 11 has been removed. Under administrative items, we took care of item 12. Item 13, boards, commissions, and committees. Do any of the council liaisons have any reports on any of their committees they're working with? Councilmember Yentes.
Mayor, we have another subcommittee for the CARES Act funding this Thursday from 3 to 5. And it would encourage people to tune in and listen to the discussion.
Thank you. I hear some good things coming out of there. Any other reports? Policy items, I'm not aware of any in any future meetings. Be sure and fill out a card if you're interested in a future agenda item. Communications from the town manager on current events.
Mayor, members of the council, nothing tonight.
Are you sure?
I could probably think of some stuff.
Report from the council on current events. Report for the mayor on current events, I have none at this time either. There's no other business with the council? We're adjourned. Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I forgot, we do have an exec session. We'll adjourn to our executive session.